I will call the meeting of the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors to order. Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
White?
Here.
Chalka?
Here.
We will now have a moment of silence to reflect on our actions. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to receive the agenda as opposed or amended.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say no. The agenda is approved. Public comments, do we have anybody in the boardroom who would like to provide public comment? Do we have anybody online who would like to provide public comment, online or on Zoom? Claims and payments, Mr. Perry?
Good morning, this week's expenditures totaled $716,441.64. Uh, the larger items, E-911 Capital, uh, $212,419. Uh, payment for Grundy Road Project, $89,675. Jail Commissary, $44,426. Sheriff's Department, $96,588. Finally, Secondary Roads, $151,214. Everything looks normal.
Motion to approve.
And it is for a resolution at the Board of Supervisors, approve expenditures and that the county auditor be authorized and directed to issue checks against the various settlements as such claims allow. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item number four, project updates from department heads and elected officials. Kathy?
Good morning, Board.
Morning.
Kathy Nicholas, County Engineer. I don't have any project updates this morning, but I did want to tell you that yesterday, um, our department and we met with the, uh, the Ragby Committee, Waterloo Police Department, Public Works, State Patrol, and then of course the Sheriff's Office, just to start the coordination of that, uh, that day when, on Wednesday and Thursday in July, July 28th and 29th, when Ragby will be coming through the county, staying overnight here in Waterloo and then traveling, uh, east outside of the county. So of course there's more work in the city limits, but we've been working with, uh, the Sheriff's Office and the State Patrol on getting our routes ready and, uh, the work that needs to be done for that. I just want to take another two minutes to tell you about a survey that we were putting together. I think I mentioned this during the budget time that we wanted to put a survey together in this coming spring before the end of the fiscal year. We've, uh, worked with, uh, Intercog to determine a sample size and some best ways to go about doing a s- a survey. We've, uh, put together questions, we've got about a dozen questions now, uh, 12 to 15 questions, some demographic questions. Questions asking the public how they feel about the paved road system, the gravel road system, the state of our bridges, and the roadside management aspects of the county road system. Uh, we've been, we're, we're working with a printer, we're going to send out these little, um, double-sided or two-sided, um, mailers, it'll go to 1,500 people in Blackhawk County. And they will send these out for us. You will be directed to a site on, uh, the Blackhawk County website. We've worked with Kim on getting the, the survey uploaded to the website. And this will direct you to that website and you'll be asked to answer these 15, uh, questions. And we're allowing people approximately 30 days to do that. I will send you all the link, uh, for the survey. And can I answer any questions? Uh, the survey completion date is approximately June 30th at this time.
And I wanted to let you know Kathy, that the resident appreciated your answer in regard to the road closures and stuff. Uh, it made sense to him, even though he was annoyed, uh, but your answer was logical and sensible and you appreciated it.
Thank you.
Sheriff?
Good morning.
Morning.
I want to let you all know that, uh, this week has been identified as Law Enforcement Officer Memorial Week. And this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. at the Waterloo Veterans Hall, we will be observing the memorial service. This year, the Sheriff's Office is the hosting agency. Uh, our guest speaker will be Jim Miller, the, uh, former wrestling coach at, uh, Whartburg College and the current Executive Director for the Gable Museum and the National Wrestling Hall of Fame. So we look forward to that. Uh, it is also the 40th anniversary of the Hoing Rice murder and the death of, uh, Bill Mulliken. So we'll be paying special tribute and honor, uh, to those folks and family at that ceremony. So, uh, you're all invited and certainly the public is invited to that as well. 11:00 a.m. at, uh, the Veterans Hall. Thanks.
Thank you.
We'll be there, some of them, okay, yeah. Any other department heads, Mr. Perry?
I just wanted to let everybody, uh, know that we did as of, uh, about 1:00 p.m. yesterday, received the guidance for the Treasury for the American Rescue Plan. Uh, we, I did, uh, go to a webinar about 3:00 p.m. yesterday. Uh, they did send out a, about a two-page summary of eligible expenses, uh, and, and other funding objectives, as well as 151-page, um, actual legal guidance. So, uh, we're going to be coming through that, uh, and then what I would like to do is, you know, set up some study sessions or planning sessions and and just try to, you know, get the, get the board's appetite of, of what we want to do, projects that we want to accomplish, things that we can do. Uh, and then all kind of get on the same page for that, so.
I think we all received a copy of the lengthy document as far as the official one. Is there any way you could just send us, I guess, the two-page summary too?
Yes, yep, yep, and that's, that's all on there as well, but yeah, I will, I'll actually just send, uh, a PDF for you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got it.
Any others in the boardroom? Any department head or elected official on Zoom that would like to provide an update? Yolando, you look anxious.
Hey, good morning, Board, this is Yolando, uh, Blackhawk County Veterans Affairs, uh, Officer. And it's good to see Tom back in his seat, so, uh, good morning to each and every one of you. Just real quick, I just wanted to, uh, add a couple of things. Um, we completed our commission meeting last Tuesday, Wednesday. And, uh, so one of our commissioners is stepping down at the end of his tenure. Um, and so we will, uh, be putting that out to, uh, Board of Supervisors for next week in that standpoint. Uh, it's actually, uh, Lieutenant Colonel Keith, uh, he's just been a, a, a stone or, or what we call an advocate, uh, and has done some great things. Our commission has, uh, been very senior-oriented and, um, military-minded and, uh, and so they really have pushed me for customer service and, uh, doing the best we can. And so we're going to miss, uh, Lieutenant Colonel Keith as he moves on to bigger and better things. But we're looking forward to an opportunity to add, um, because there was some excitement the last time we had an open seat for the commission. And so he wants to give another veteran an opportunity to participate in this team as we move forward into 2021 and 2022 in that standpoint. Also, May is Military Appreciation Month. Um, I, I know that if you haven't seen in the news that the Coast Guard and the Navy are doing some great things out there. Uh, in fact, our whole Armed Forces is, in that standpoint, are doing great things defending our country in that standpoint. Uh, we do have a proposal out there, uh, to go ahead and move forward with, uh, a, uh, open house, um, with all the safety precautions in play, uh, before, uh, Colonel Keith steps down. And so we're looking at June 10th, if, um, we are, you know, permitted to do that through the County Health Department, uh, to do an open house, to allow the public to actually see the great things that the Board of Supervisors has given us in a standpoint here at our new facility. Uh, again, it's, it's a proposal because we, we're also ready to move into July depending on the safety and how well the, you know, the pandemic is doing and standpoint is, is it recessing in that, at a standpoint. But we would like to move forward with that, um, and, uh, and that'll be on June 10th, our proposed date, June 10th, from 11:00 to 2:00. And what we'll do is just walk people through, show them, and then they'll go outside and there will be, uh, hamburgers and hot dogs and things of that nature, um, as a, a trinket and just to show our appreciation and allow the community to see the great things that, uh, the Board of Supervisors have approved. We had, uh, we helped two veterans with, uh, two veteran families with cremations, uh, this month. I've kind of sent you a slideshow of, uh, you know, what we've done and what we've accomplished, the events we took part in. One big thing is Bill Caldwell Ford and the community of Hudson. Um, they really stepped up for us, they allowed, uh, the Veterans Affairs to be part of that field of 50. Um, they raised $580 in cash donations and then almost $1,200 in hygiene and food products. So for the city of Hudson and that community, in particular Bill Ford and his leadership and his team, uh, we, we have to take our hats off. Again, that's the development of the community, supporting the, uh, Veterans Affairs Office. And, uh, I couldn't be overjoyed with what they've done for us in that standpoint. And then lastly, um, we, we've seen an uptick, um, as we proceed within four months of this year. Uh, April, we, we actually had some, some of our highest numbers in over two years of veterans, you know, searching through the pandemic in that standpoint. We was able to go to the training, uh, last month in, in April down in Des Moines. Uh, they, they split it up so you didn't have all 99 counties participating in a training. They had a two-day training where 50 counties went one day and then, uh, 48 went the other. Uh, but it was able to, we were able to kind of share some common knowledge, um, and some, some best practices going forward. And we look forward to our, what we call our, our, um, summer or fall training, uh, to where we can do that again. It was good to get out and participate in that. But in particular, one of the takeaways that I've learned was, um, through the leadership of our county commissioners and our health department and just our, uh, team here, we were probably one of the only offices after June, uh, that started taking in, um, veterans, uh, face-to-face and, and that standpoint. And I'm proud of that because we were able to, to serve our veteran community in that standpoint. There were still offices that closed throughout the year and that's something that we found out. But we were able to, to serve our veterans after June and, and during the pandemic. So we learned some lessons learned if we moved forward. Um, so we had a total, uh, incline of about 136 veterans, new ones. Uh, I mean, that came through our door, um, that we helped. Out of that, it was 26 new veterans. And, uh, that, I want you to hold on to that number because it's unique, that 26 new. Uh, we had, uh, also an increase in walk-in. Uh, so as the weather is getting better, we're starting to see a lot more walk-in in that standpoint. Uh, a couple of the unique things is we, we've had our highest number of Cedar Falls veterans. Uh, in particular, uh, I, I give my hats off to, to Tom Haggerty and, and, uh, and also Mike Butler, because they're our two advocates in Cedar Falls to get, uh, those residents to come out to our office. And they're doing a great job there. And we're still getting, we're averaging about 11 or so veterans, uh, from outside of Blackhawk County that are coming into our office. Uh, the last thing I wanted to add was we had about 74 Vietnam veterans that came into our office last month. Uh, and so we're seeing, uh, a unique increase in that area. And that's particular because the last three months, uh, we've had, I personally have helped a, a veteran, um, get to 100% and then that veteran, uh, actually transitioned that same month. So they didn't really get the benefit of, um, what they were entitled to. So it's really important that we continue to, to push to get our Vietnam veterans in our office. And it's, I mean, it's been three straight months that we've helped a veteran get to a point and then they succumb to their, uh, injuries before they can even take advantage of their compensation. Um, and that's, and so it really eats on you. But what I wanted to talk about was we're, we're still maintaining, uh, we, we actually have about 1,800 veterans, uh, that are receiving various compensations, whether it's, uh, spouse or widow or the veteran itself. We're still maintaining about $2.3 million in, um, revenue that is coming into Blackhawk County to these veterans to actually spend within Blackhawk County. We're fifth in the state out of all of the 99 counties when it comes to that. And so that's something that I'm taking a, a unique turn to, either to maintain where we're at or to increase. Uh, there is some competition there and, uh, it is based off veteran size and the community. Uh, but again, we, there is still some veterans out there who need to come in and visit our office to see exactly, in particular those Vietnam veterans, to see exactly what benefits they may have. So we're continuing to encourage them to come in to our office so that we can, uh, maintain what we're doing. Lastly, we're, we're still changing lives and, and that's what really matters is, are we changing lives and are we making a difference? And this team, I would give the Board of Supervisors that pat on the back that you've allowed us to change some people's lives. And I see it every day, uh, whether I'm on, on the Honor Guard, uh, at our funeral. Um, in fact, on Friday, we had three different funerals, so you had service organizations out there. And that's a big one, we got to get, uh, more recruitment in our service organizations, um, to help with these, uh, burials and these funerals. Because our, 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 um, we have an aging service organizations out there, whether it's the VFW, AMVETS, American Legion, you name it, um, it's very aging and we, we're looking to fulfill that gap. And, uh, so it starts with me in that standpoint. And, uh, I would give you my promise that I'll do all I can to support this community, uh, whether it's in this office or in some other, uh, role, um, in that standpoint. Stand by to address any questions or concerns.
Yolando, that seems like a nice event on June 10th and it sounds like you're already, uh, you have a dialogue with the Health Department to accomplish it, so good luck with it. Are there any other department heads on Zoom that would like to provide an update?
Mike Hendrickson, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here guys, but I don't have anything, uh, pertinent for today, so thank you.
What about, what about reporting about the event you had out at Big Woods on Friday with the kids? That was very nice and we need to continue that.
Yeah, no, and, and you're, uh, this is the month that we see a lot of that. Um, our naturalists have programming lined up, uh, every week with the school system. So literally, you're going to be seeing hundreds and hundreds of kids out there. This is an event, uh, this is programming that used to take place over at Hartman, uh, down below, uh, at Minats Lake. But we had so many years, so many springs that we flooded out and had to cancel those things. We decided that, um, it made sense to move that programming, um, to Big Woods. There are, you know, just lots of opportunities for outdoor recreation, whether it's biking or hiking or fishing off that really nice dock. Um, and all the things that those kids can do, kayaking and canoeing and all those kinds of things. So we made the decision a couple of years ago to move that. So you're going to be seeing that on a weekly basis now, right up until school's out. But it literally will encompass hundreds and hundreds of kids, um, from now until school's out. So, yeah, what you saw there Friday, uh, Craig, is really pretty cool. Um, those kids were having a great time and, um, uh, we just have, uh, great participation, uh, with the school systems throughout the Cedar Valley.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, uh, item number five, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting on, uh, May 4th, 2021.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. The minutes are approved. Item number six is the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item number seven A is a motion to sign a letter of support to Intercog for COVID-19 Relief Recreational Trails Grant applications for George With State Park and the American Discovery Trail reconstruction.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
And I know we've all seen the email, I said that came through on this and it was just this one-time availability of funds, $5 million across the state for the COVID-19 Relief Recreational Trails Grant application. So these were four that were submitted and hopefully we can support today, so.
Yes. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. It is approved. Item seven B, a motion to sign a letter of support to Intercog for COVID-19 Relief Recreational Trails Grant applications for the City of Waterloo and the Cedar Prairie Trail Bridge replacement.
So moved.
Second.
Same narrative. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. It is approved. Item number seven C, motion to sign a letter of support to Intercog for COVID-19 Relief Recreational Trails Grant applications for Blackhawk County Conservation and the Cedar Valley Nature Trail paving extension.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. It is approved. Item seven D, a motion to sign a letter of support for Intercog for COVID-19 Ref- Relief Recreational Trails Grant applications for the City of Waverly and the Rolling Prairie Trail Bridge Replacement Project.
So moved.
Second.
Any additional comments or questions?
And this one we recognize is a Brimer County rather than Blackhawk County, uh, because of the proximity to the, to this area and that it would benefit us as an area in the state, uh, that one is included as well from this REAP group. Intercog represents several.
Yes.
Brimer County doing the same.
Is what, yes, they do the same.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. It is approved. Item seven E is a motion to authorize and direct the Finance Director to set the date for a public hearing to be held at 9:05 a.m. on May 25th, 2021 in Boardroom 201 of the Blackhawk County Courthouse, Waterloo, Iowa, on the proposed fiscal year '22 budget amendment. It has been moved by Mr. Little, seconded by Mr. White. Any comments or questions, Mr. Perry?
Uh, just one that we were going to have, it's, uh, the week before on the 18th, but we're just moving it to the 25th.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed say no. It is approved. Item seven F is a resolution in support of two applications filed with and by the City of Dunkerton, Iowa, seeking the voluntary annexation of parcel numbers 9011-28-151-004 into the City of Dunkerton, Iowa pursuant, pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 368.
Mayor Shiers, did you want to comment on this?
Good morning. Hey, uh, both of these parcels are city-owned parcels. Uh, one north of town is 40 acres, it's a nature preserve. There will be no building on that land at all, that 40 acres, it is a wetland. And it's owned by the city, so we figured it should be annexed into the city. The other parcels on Long, uh, Highway 281, Camfield Street 2, and that is in the middle of town. On three sides of it is, uh, a budding city-owned, or the city, city limits. And 95 foot of that parcel is in the county. The other 55 of that parcel is in the city limits. We plan on both parcels next month, having public hearings, setting zoning. The wetlands will be ag, more or less, R1, so that will not change. The other parcel, uh, part of it's commercial, the other part's residential. We plan on having that unrestricted as commercial. So, any questions?
Move to approve?
Second. Appreciate you coming in and explaining that, I said, too, I didn't see that, thank you.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item number seven G is a resolution in support of two applications filed with the City of Hudson, Iowa, for title holders Kurt Bovers and Jennifer Bovers by their letter dated March 23rd, 2021, seeking the voluntary annexation of two parcels described in said applications into the City of Hudson, Iowa pursuant to Iowa Code, Chapter 368. It's been moved and seconded, any comments or questions? And we do have a representative from the City of Hudson on Zoom, yes ma'am?
Yes, that's correct. Um, I just wanted to comment that, uh, the two parcels that we're looking to annex into the City of Hudson, um, are both owned by Kurt and Jennifer Bovers. And, uh, should the annexation be granted, uh, there will be four or five residential lots that will be created on those parcels.
Chrissy, I noticed that you have about six property owners identified, I think, in the materials that you submitted. Are there plans to further develop that area or, and this is just the beginning stages of it. I knew there was a property in particular that was, um, sandwiched in between the two parcels.
I believe that at some point they may, um, annex in, uh, into the, the city, but they didn't want to at this time. And so with, uh, those two parcels, we were not creating an island. And so felt that, that by doing just these two parcels at, at this time would be beneficial.
How long's Kurt and Jennifer owned this property?
Uh, I, not very long, I believe maybe six months.
Has there been any opposition or any concern, residents?
No, I have not heard anything at this time. I sent, uh, notification out to them, uh, on the third, no, I'm sorry, the fourth of May, and I have not heard anything from any of the, uh, adjoining property, or the adjacent property owners.
So the intention of the area, entire area is really further development from the residential side, it looked like?
Yes, that's correct.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
White?
Yes.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item seven H, discussion possible board action to proceed with submitting an application to the Iowa Inspections and Appeals to determine if the courthouse is able to provide a micro-market. Market. Ana?
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, so I just wanted to give a little update on the micro-market from when I was here a couple of weeks back. Um, I did reach out to the post office and I left them two voicemails about setting up a time to go look at their market, just, um, I know Chris wanted to see it. And I haven't heard anything back, but I'm going to keep trying. Um, also I did notice that the vending machines downstairs are getting a lot more activity now that jury is starting back up again and the trials are starting. Um, and so as I told you a couple of weeks back, um, in order to get a micro-market, we have to go through the Iowa Department of Inspections and Appeals. And so, um, they are on the call too, somebody from the Iowa Department of, um, Iowa Department of the Blind, I did reach out to them and, um, capital vending. And I did find out that capital vending would be the people that would apply for the licensing. And so I just wanted to check to see if you guys were okay, if we at least found out if we would have the market here or not. Or if you wanted to, um, if you still had some other questions about it.
And we understood that this wasn't really that we're approving going forward.
Right.
This is just approving the next step in the process to see if we even could do it.
Right.
I think so, yeah.
Do you need something, well, we said we can have a possible board action and I guess you'd like to know, rather than to pursue it and then find out, that we aren't interested.
Exactly, yep.
What'd the survey say? The people that you surveyed?
The survey from a couple of weeks back, uh, I think it came out to 65% so that they would use it and 35 so they wouldn't. Um, there weren't a lot of people that took the survey.
Mm-hmm. So that worries me about the interest in using it. We had enough problems with the one we had before with the restaurant, you could hardly make ends meet doing it.
This is going to be a lot like vending machines though.
I understand.
They're not, right, they're not going to use it.
For so long.
Yeah, but it's on them, it's not on us then to keep it fresh and current.
It's beside the point.
Is there any cause to the county at all?
No.
And I assume if they determine it's not profitable for them, they just walk away.
Correct.
Yeah, and we, we retain the, the current vending machines that we have now, is that?
We have to provide the microwave?
We already have a microwave, but.
We have to provide that?
Um, I, we can keep the one that we have down there, but I've seen in their other markets that they do have a microwave that comes with it and a coffee machine, so. They provide their own cameras as well, um, so. We would just need to have Wi-Fi connection down there.
Is that room all ready to go, Greg? I know it was in bad shape before.
Um, we would have to clear that room out and sell some of the equipment if we would, if we did go through with this and then possibly just, I think honestly, just paint it, that would be really.
The security cameras would be monitored by who?
Um, so the security cameras, they bring in their own software and it would be monitored by them.
By them?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to, uh, proceed with the process to be.
I'll second it. Might as well find out, I said we need to see, we may not be even applicable, so.
Great, great.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I think you probably should do a resolution.
Mr. Veder, roll call vote, please.
Layland?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Chalka?
Yes.
Item seven I, discussion in regard to county preparedness and possible updates for COVID-19. Dr. Inbohnye?
Good morning, Board. I hope your week has started well. I'm excited to share that we're, we're moving a little bit when it comes to vaccinations. We're not doing, we're not moving as fast as a community, but we're still moving. So from last week, we had about 53% of our 18 and older population vaccinated, and this week it's at 54.8%, so we're making slight progress, but definitely not as, as fast and as, as high as I would like. Other than that, yesterday we received good news, the Pfizer vaccine was just approved for the 12 to 15-year-old, and so today the state is holding a webinar with us at noon in which I'll be attending. One of the areas that we're, we're trying to focus and, and really target is the 18 to 24-year-olds. That's where we're seeing the gaps in terms of vaccination in, in our county, and so we're trying our best to be very strategic to reach the, this particular population, and also the, the general population as well that have vaccine hesitancy. We're working with our healthcare providers to be at events such as the Farmer's Market, Unity Point will be at Friday Lou. This weekend, we are also having our boost doses at Cattle Congress. We're also going to provide walk-ins for primary doses. We're also establishing vaccine, vaccinations during evening hours, so we're looking at providing, you know, vaccination at the Hampton Inn in Cedar Falls between 4:00 and 7:00. We're reaching out to the fire stations, and we'll be reaching out also to law enforcement so that we can also expand our reach in the rural communities. But just, just, this has been just a slow process right now, very different from previously where demand was much higher than supply, but now we have enough vaccines for, for Blackhawk County. We've declined our allocation for last week, and we will, we will continue to do that until we, we really make some, some waves into more vaccinations in, in the community. So that's where we are. I highly encourage when you see someone, those one-on-one conversations, whether it's with friends or family members, are going to be very important to get people vaccinated, but these are the strategies that we're working on, so I'm hoping that we'll have some positive outcomes in regards to that. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Any other possible updates in regard to COVID-19? Okay, any reports or information from the board?
We should do adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed, say no. We are adjourned.